Lee?
Good evening.
Hello, David. Let's see, do we have Commissioner? I think, I think we can get started and hopefully he'll join within a few minutes. So, good evening, everyone, and I will bring the meeting of February 22, 2022, of the San Carlos Planning Commission to order. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
And for the record, Commissioner Garvey is absent this evening. Mr. Yakapony?
Present.
And I don't see Don Bradley, so I'll mark him absent unless he happens to join in in a little bit. Vice Chair Clements?
Present.
And Chair Ruth?
Present. And next, the next item on our agenda is the public comment. And this public comment section is limited to items that are not on the agenda. And the commission, the commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 54954.2. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention, or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for more comprehensive action or report. So Sarah, are there anyone in the waiting room for the, for the public comment?
There are none at this time.
Okay, let's, let's move on to the next agenda topic then, which is approval of minutes. And so we have minutes from January 12, 18, and February 7. Do we, do we just handle them all as one group with a single motion to approve?
I would be fine with nature.
Yeah, and you can do that if you like.
Okay. And so are there any comments on the minutes?
None by me on any of the three of them.
Okay, and I see Vice Chair Clements, you have a comment?
Chair, I just wanted to commend staff for the level of detail that is in the minutes. And I know it takes a lot of effort to get minutes looking this good. So I just wanted to acknowledge all the hard work and hours that went into these three sets of minutes. And with that, I would move approval of all three.
Okay.
And I could state the motion if we'd like, either way.
Is there a slide with the motion on it, or do we just go off of this one?
You can just.
I'm happy to go off.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Wonderful. We have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Yakapony?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. They were good minutes.
Thank you. I'll make sure to pass that on. But I do look at them and read them before they're, they go into the pocket.
That's helpful. I'm sure to have several passes. So the next item on our agenda is the public hearing. And the procedure for a public hearing, the staff will present a report on the history of physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation thereafter, and interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing describing this notice, the public notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should state their name prior to addressing the commission. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. Our item today is 611 Industrial Road, APN 046090370. Request for design review and mitigated negative declaration for a new electronic billboard. Staff presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Sanders, Principal Planner, I'll be writing the staff presentation. As the San Carlos Municipal Code allows billboards on city property with design review from the Planning Commission and a lease agreement approved by the City Council. The project is located at the rear, is proposed to be located at the rear of 611 Industrial Road. That's adjacent to the US 101 Southbound Lanes. It's located within the heavy industrial zoning district and surrounded by commercial and industrial uses. The Residence Inn Hotel is located to the north, and residential homes are located to the west. The proposed billboard is at a height of 55 feet above grade. The billboard itself would be a 48 by 14-foot display area. It's double-sided in a V shape, located 41 feet above grade to the underside of the display area. And then the pole is a decorative brushed aluminum pole cover with the City of Good Living logo on it. The site plan shows the proposed location of the site relative to the existing building in US Highway 101. The pole will be the only obstruction at the ground level, as the billboard itself is located 41 feet above grade. So as you can see, the pole is located rather close to the rear of the building. And the tenant will have access to the area beneath the billboard for continued equipment storage or purpose. The applicant has submitted visual simulations that show the existing conditions. The next slide? Thank you. That show the existing conditions on the left and the proposed billboard on the right. And this view is 200 feet away from the billboard when traveling northbound on US Highway 101. This also proposed visual simulation with the billboard located behind the commercial building approximately 600 feet east of Industrial Road. Visual simulation shows that the billboard will not be visible from Industrial Road in the adjacent residential neighborhood due to the blockage from the commercial buildings. The next slide shows the billboard as visible from the guest room at the Residence Inn Hotel, but not within direct line of sight. And this visual simulation is shown from a fourth-floor guest room. Billboard has automatic display sensors for light levels to adjust at night and during darkened evening conditions. Billboard will be dark or completely shut off from midnight until 6:00 AM. And the billboard does, is proposed to comply with the separation requirement of at least 1,000 feet from another electronic message center. Billboard is also consistent with the regulations contained in the San Carlos Municipal Code, as it complies with the height limit, with the area maximum oriented towards the freeway, and minimally visible from the residential neighborhood. An initial study mitigated negative declaration found no impacts from implementation of the proposed billboard that cannot be mitigated to less than significant level. Mitigation measures relating to air quality during construction to minimize dust and exhaust, cultural resources, if any archaeological or paleontological resources are found, and hazardous materials that contaminated soil or groundwater are found. We did receive one comment prior to this meeting. I believe it's been distributed to the planning commissioners, and that was from the Belmont-San Carlos Sierra Group. The comment expressed concern with the light of billboard near a riparian corridor, and requests the billboard be turned off from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and that a full EIR be prepared. The mitigated negative declaration did evaluate the billboard in the proximity to the sensitive biological habitat. And that's outlined in Biological Resources Section 4.4, found on pages 41 and 42. And that shows that the site is located in an industrial area, an area that is already well lit at night, and the nearest sensitive biological habitats are not close to the site. They're well over 1,500 feet away across the freeway. So this is not what a Sequoia consultant considers as near a sensitive habitat. And there's no trees or landscaping on the site. So the Sequoia consultant found that the double-sided billboard will not create a large illuminated zone that could be attractive to night flying birds. Colors on the billboard would not be predominantly red or white, which attracts birds. And the sign would not be illuminated during the hours of 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM. It would also not have transparent or reflective surfaces, which could lead to bird collisions. So based on that analysis, the project does not find that there would be a significant impact relating to biological resources. A notice of the mitigated negative declaration was mailed to property owners and occupants within 300 feet of the site on January 12 for the 30-day public review period. No comments have been received on the mitigated negative declaration during the comment period, although, as I just mentioned, we did receive one just before this meeting. Public comments on the hearing were mailed to all property owners and occupants on February 8, and published in the newspaper on February 10. And relating to that notice, we did receive one comment from the Samatow County Electrical Training Center located just adjacent to the site at 625 Industrial Road. They expressed concern that the location of the billboard could impact tenant equipment storage at 611 Industrial and cause additional overflow parking on 625 Industrial. Staff conducted a site inspection and also spoke with the applicant. And it does not appear that the support column would impact the adjacent tenant. The applicant was able to confirm that the location of the support column would not displace parking. And we also have, from managing the agent of the property, that it would not impact the tenant. So here is the motion. Should you choose to approve the project, is both the negative declaration with the resolution and then the design review certificate for the billboard. And I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Are there clarifying questions from the commissioners before we open for public comment? And I see Vice Chair Clements would like to go first.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Lisa, for that very good presentation. It did address.
I'm sorry. Do we have Don Bradley? I see a phone number and a participant.
Great. No, I'm on now. Can you?
Thank you. Sorry for that interruption.
Welcome. No, no, I'm glad Commissioner Bradley's here. Welcome. Your, your comments did address a couple of the questions that I had. Could you talk again a little bit more about the, the riparian corridor and the habitat that is across Highway 101 but to the east side? And you said for the purposes of Sequoia that, that that 1,500 feet across the highway is far enough away that it was not judged to be a sequent impact? Is, did I have that correct, or could you elaborate on that some more, please?
Yeah, so based on the analysis in the sequent document, and I also followed up with our sequent consultant this afternoon to discuss it a little further. And then they did indicate that the billboard, for a few reasons, is far enough away from that corridor. They do not see that as kind of a, an area where the birds are migrating across the freeway. It's already an industrial built-up area that is already lit at night. And it doesn't have habitat on it that also would attract the birds. So there's not a lot of trees adjacent to the billboard that would be an attractor for the, for the birds or other, you know, natural, like a creek or something else that would be a good habitat to attract the birds. So they also noted that billboard does go dark at night. So it would be shut off between midnight and 6:00 AM.
Great, thank you. And I had a second question, if the chair doesn't mind, which was, which was just about the brightness of the billboard and, you know, light pollution to the night skies. And I, if you could be a little bit more specific or go into this a little bit more, I would appreciate it. What the, what the city's guidelines are for the limits of, of light, of ambient light, and also the directional aspects to that, and how this billboard proposal fits within that.
Sure. So the city doesn't have any specific requirements for the lighting of the billboards. But there are highway codes that are required to be complied with. So that has to do with the brightness, the foot candles, and how frequently the message rotates. So to make sure there's no flashing images. And I'd like to have the applicant expand on that during their response to the comments. But a couple of things. The billboard is kind of oriented in a V, so that is not oriented towards the residential neighborhood of, in the western hills, but it's more oriented, you know, specifically towards the freeway. So it's specifically angled kind of away from that residential viewpoints. And then it does have a sensor. So if it's a dark kind of overcast day even, it would dim according to what, what that sensor perceives as the night, as the sky brightness, and it would adjust accordingly. But I'd like to have the applicant expand as well during their comments.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Thank you, Chair. Lisa, could you just remind us about the notion of the city leasing the property and then subleasing it on for the installation? Maybe we've done that before, but I just don't remember. So why, why do we do that?
Certainly. So our code does allow billboards on city-owned property only or city-controlled property only. So it does not currently allow billboards on private property. So in order to even consider a billboard, it needs to be on city-controlled property, either ownership or a lease agreement. And so in this case, it would be via a lease agreement. So the Orion would lease the property from the applicant, and, excuse me, the, the city would lease the property and then would lease it back to Orion for operation of the billboard. And then the city gets the revenue from the lease of that property. And we have approved four in the past at 817 American, 1119 Industrial. The city property is 800 Branston, and then one that has not been built yet at 171 Industrial. So three of the four have been on leased property, one on owned property.
Very good. And I'll, I guess I'll, can wait, but Chair Ruth, I do have a follow-up.
And I can add that Adam Aronson, our Economic Development Manager, is also here this evening. If you have any further questions, it may be more appropriate for him to respond to those.
Yeah, great, thank you. I guess I have a more general question, because I know a number of us have approved several of these in the past. We have four, and I think you said we have three in. This would be the fifth approval, so in theory, we could have five within the 101 corridor. What is, like, what's our upper limit? How many more of these could we be seeing by code?
Sure. So I can have maybe Adam respond to that one, because I haven't analyzed. There does need to be that thousand-foot separation, what other locations there could be. But I should also note, there's one privately-held billboard before this restriction went into place at 1 Circle Star Way. And that was the old billboard that was repurposed from when it was actually the Circle Star Theater. So there would be a total of six within the San Carlos corridor. Then, Adam, if you could respond to how many more are potential?
So I can't speak to the thousand-foot distance with regards to how many that then max out with the number of billboards in the city. We don't have a specific limit on the number of digital billboards, but I can say that, you know, the council does feel that in their, their previous discussions, that we're starting to reach the upper limit of what they feel is appropriate for the city. And I don't believe they would be open to very many beyond this.
Very good. I'll, I'll save follow-ups for when we have a commission discussion. Thank you.
And. Ruth? Yes, please, Commissioner Bradley.
Yeah, excuse me for butting in like this, but I want to further Vice Chair Clements' comments on glare. And when someone mentioned the one, Lisa, I believe, mentioned one down on the north end of town where the Circle Star Theater was. And that sign got idolized, or whatever you want to call it. And I haven't noticed for a while now, because I don't get out after dark going that way much. But it was extremely bright and glaring and hazardous. As I believe this one will be because of the size of it and the height of it. It's size of a average-sized apartment, 700, what is it? 142 square feet. Think about that. And it's 55 feet in the air. So what I'm really worried about is for pilots wanting to land at San Carlos Airport. And we're putting up this giant post with a flag on the end of it and set up, which is distracting the pilots as well as drivers and a safety hazard on the, for the 101 freeway. Driving, we all know that signs are distracting. There's only two purposes that signs should have. Informational and, and, and advertising. And we don't need the advertising. It's a city this poor. We have to keep getting these things that are derogatory to the, the city, I believe, and.
Well, let's, let's save the, save that part of the discussion for after the public comment. It's kind of a deliberation, a deliberation point, an important one. So definitely bring it up. But about the airport, does the city staff have, have a response about impact to the airport operation?
Yeah, we haven't received any comments from the airport relating to this project or any of the other billboards that have, are operational. We have not received any concern or comments from them.
Okay. I had a question or two myself, and one of them is, is there any, this billboard is branded with the City of San Carlos name and has some responsibility for it. Is there any restrictions or oversight of the content that could be on it? Can there be political advertising? Or perhaps controversial content that we may not want to associate with the city?
Adam, are you able, I believe there are, yeah.
Yes, that's correct. So within the sublease agreement, there is language where if there's any, any signage or advertisements on the sign that is believed to be sensitive, it needs to be shared with the city first, and then the city has a chance to either approve or deny what that particular messaging is if it is believed to not reflect the city in a manner that we would wish it to.
Okay, thank you. And how long is the city committed to maintaining the billboard? Is the lease? Are, are we stuck with it for a certain amount of time once we sign off on the lease?
So it's a 20-year lease with then a 10-year option, and that option is at the terms of the lease. So essentially up to 30 years.
Okay. It's an option for the leasee, so.
Okay, that's correct. And that's, that is the terms that is on the other billboards that are previously been approved in terms of time.
Okay. The other LED billboards, do they also have the restriction of midnight to 6:00 AM dark?
They do. I'm not sure about the Circle Star billboard, since that one preceded the city's involvement with these. But the other billboards do have that same restriction.
Okay. Well, the Circle Star billboard, is that a San Carlos billboard or Redwood City? It was?
It's within the City of San Carlos city limits, but it's privately held and maintained.
I see. Okay. Those are my questions. So we can take a second pass here. Commissioner, Vice Chair Clements?
Thanks, Chair. I just, I had a simple question. I had two questions. One is about the lease agreement, which I realize is not before us this evening. But I wanted just to ask Adam if the city has guidelines as to conditions or parameters under which that it would enter into lease agreements for billboards. How would the city decide if somebody came to us and said, hey, would you like to do this with us?
So historically, we don't have specific parameters on what the lease terms would be. But we wouldn't consider something that doesn't meet at the bare minimum what we've received from previous billboards. And we're at the point now where we have enough in the city that we're not really willing to consider it any unless they go beyond the previous terms that have been offered to the city.
Great. And can I ask a technical question then, as we, maybe this is a Lisa question? As we're considering the environmental impacts of the action is around the EIR neg deck and the environmental analysis, and can we make a recommendation to the City Council as well regarding the lease? Or is the lease not agendized tonight? So we cannot do that.
The lease is not under your authority, but depending on what the comment is, I'm sure we could carry it forward.
Okay, thanks. So we'll handle during comments, then that makes sense. And then one just logistics question. There's an airport land use committee, correct?
Yes.
See, but the Alex doesn't have to sign off on billboards. Is that correct?
That's my understanding correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions before we move to the, well, are we going to have the, the applicant present?
The applicant here this evening and would be happy to answer any questions.
Is that part of the, of the public comment, or is that part of the presentation?
You can open the public comment period and have the applicant go first. Yes.
Okay, okay. I don't see any other hands raised, so let's move to the public comment. If you would like to make.
Mine's up, but you can't see it.
That's right. So go ahead, Commissioner Bradley.
I, I just, one clarification. It seems to me the last one of these that we approved after a lot of controversy. We told the building owner that sign that he was going to put up. Now, it wasn't one of these big LED signs 50 feet in the air either, but it was just built, a sign attached to a one-story building, as this one is. But this other one didn't, didn't go up in the air. It was truly one-story and not that much lighting, I remember. But I remember us telling him that the only thing he could put on the sign was the occupants of the building that he owned on the same property. And he didn't like that, but that's what we told him. And now this one is going to be put up in, every eight seconds it change and have anything except objectionable information on it. Did we change our policy, or is it just that the city owns or rather leases the property? And therefore it gets around that requirement, so the, the sign can do a lot of advertising, not just informational, which was the case of the prior one. I have some clarification on that, please.
Sure, so I can clarify. So I believe the billboard that Commissioner Bradley is referring to is located at 171 Industrial Road. There's a static billboard there now. The adjacent property owner and business owner had a advertising message that was also static attached to the supports of that billboard, so beneath it. When this Planning Commission. When this planning commission and city council approved the lease agreement for the new electronic billboard. It prohibited the ability to attach any other messages to that electronic billboard relating to the business. So then the property owner came back and had a separate sign that they he wanted to propose adjacent to it. And the restriction was put on that separate sign that it could only advertise the adjacent business. And Commissioner Bradley is correct. The property owner was not pleased with that determination. Um, that business has since turned over and is now being run by Lyft Collision Center. And so the advertisement that you see out there just simply says Lyft. And so it is in compliance with the city regulations as a separate sign advertising the business.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move to the uh public comment section. And if you would like to make a public comment on Agenda Item Six A. For six eleven Industrial Road, now is the time to speak. You may join the Zoom meeting. At the link provided or call the phone number provided and enter the ID and virtually raise your hand. Um or if you're on the phone, press star nine and then star six to unmute. And we'll start off with the uh with the applicant. Welcome. Lisa, introduce yourself.
I'm Charles Beck. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Orion Outdoor Media. I'm here to answer all your questions regarding the development, the the uh. The construction, the lighting, of course, the um. The pole placement, photo simulations, anything regarding the operations or construction of the sign. Um, our CEO is also on the line tonight. If you did have any any of the uh contractual or or monetary. Questions, he he'd be happy to answer that as well. Um I would like to address the uh lighting comments. Um to kind of uh if somebody, is there a possibility somebody could pull up page one sixty nine of the? No? Okay, so on page one sixty nine of the um agenda packet. There is a photo simulation of the sign that's existing at Branston Road. And it's a photo simulation I took at nighttime from industrial. And you can see there's clearly zero light. Uh spillover or or shed. You can't even in the photo simulation, you can't even tell the sign's on. And I'm standing a hundred feet away from it. Um, so the the new technology on these signs, this sign is going to be an exact replica. Of the last two that were built in the city. They're gonna look easy. We're using the same manufacturer. We're using the same pole cover manufacturer, same screen. Manufacturer. So it's gonna look exactly like the one that's at Branston. It'll be a cookie cutter of that sign. Um, now the technology on the screens has got a little bit better, but um. As far as as far as what we are constructing, it's going to be no different than any other. Sign that's already been approved by the city council and it's already in in a. A developed industrial zone. Um, you know, across from the airport. Um, and the lighting complies with all state standards and um. Again, if you look at that photo simulation, I think it kind of speaks for itself. It's a. Um, the spillover on these signs now is almost zero. They they almost appear backlit. Not, you know, they're not projecting light. Per se, so um and they are oriented towards the freeway. I think there's another photo simulation that shows. The orientation of the V so where the any visibility, even if you were standing. Right behind the sign, you couldn't see the faces because the way they're. So if you're behind the sign, they're angled like this. So you don't see the uh you don't see the faces even if you're standing right up close to the sign. So um I think, you know, they're they're made to be projected towards the viewers on Highway one oh one and not anybody else. So. With that, if there's any other questions other than the lighting, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for that. And I I think that helps clarify the concern that was raised. And let's see if we have anyone else um that would like to make a public comment. Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room?
Yes, um caller ending in four oh three. You are unmuted and you have two minutes to speak.
Hello, welcome. We don't hear you yet. You might have to push star six if you're on the phone. Well, um. That's not working, so um.
Hello.
Oh, now we hear you.
Hello.
Hi, welcome.
This is Dr. Burt Ray. Did you hear me?
Now we hear you.
Oh, excellent. Uh anyway, I'm a resident of uh San Carlos for the past fifty years. Uh we have been in the riparian area as well as the Nob Hill. Area in which thousands of birds fly over your proposed sign. The the birds can, of course, see it uh and during the migratory period, which is exactly the time when the hours are very short. Uh of sunlight. And then, of course, your sign will now be attracting and distracting these birds. So. The Sierra Club is very concerned about the location of this sign. Uh which will lead to bird strike, the confusion amongst the birds. And it's uh from the standpoint of birds. That uh insects is a ecological disaster. And uh the Sierra Club and we personally are very opposed to it. Uh. We visit these sites on a daily basis. And currently, if you happen to go down there during the night hours. And just before sunset, when your lights going to come on. Uh you will see thousands of birds on the Nob Hill pond area and in the riparian area as well. So. We're certainly opposed to this uh. Lighted sign. From a environmental perspective and we don't really see that an appropriate study has been undertaken to address that issue.
Thank you. Sarah, is there an additional caller?
There are no callers at this time.
Okay. I'm waiting my. Ten or fifteen seconds to see if any anybody pops up before we close the public comment. Well, since there are no additional uh public comments, I would entertain a motion to close the common public comment period.
Um, so moved. I move that we close the public comment period on item six A for six eleven Industrial Road.
A second.
Thank you for the motion in a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Ruth.
Yes. Okay. Now we have an opportunity to discuss. Um can we can we have the uh the motion on the screen so we know what we're the scope of what we're. Asked to approve? Thank you. And so um. Before we start the discussion, I just point out that we're um. Approving the proposed mitigated negative declaration. Um and so as was like I mentioned earlier. Um, we're not weighing in on the contract terms um here as a planning commission, but um. Um, but instead we're addressing the things that are listed in this motion. So uh to start the um deliberations off, um Vice Chair Clements, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you, Chair. I had a another question for staff that just occurred to me. I apologize. I didn't think of it before. If you don't mind if I ask. Um, this is a mitigated neg deck and the um the caller suggested that this study was. Not sufficient. And I think the Sierra Club's comment was that a full EIR. And would be more appropriate for this project. Um but we also heard from staff that the sequo analysis. Was already applied um in the um in the analysis that was done. And so I guess I wanted to ask staff if. If a more full study was done, um would anything change about the analysis or have the standards for the sequel review? Already been accomplished and that that part um really would not change much.
Um, so thank you for the question. In order to determine what level of, you know, sequel review is appropriate. Um, the secret consultant goes through the initial study checklist first, and I know the planning commission has seen that before. And they go through and kind of review the project in relation to those different checklist items to see. Is there any item that could have a potential for a significant impact? With without any mitigation measures? And that's kind of what triggers, right? Where we get to then do an EIR and we need further analysis. So with this project, the consultant went through that checklist. Um took a look at where those biological resources are in relation to this project, the habitat on the site. And did not find that there was the need to do any additional analysis. And speaking with the secret consultant this afternoon, they've also noted that um the Sierra Club has not presented substantial evidence. That there would be an impact and that it should be um analyzed. I know they provided some information about a separate project. Um but that is at a different location than this site. Um as you're look as you're very familiar with San Carlos, six eleven Industrial has got the freeway and then across from the freeway are other businesses. Um, Hiller Aviation Museum, the six five five um Skyway Construction is going on right now, that new office and. Hangar Development. And then beyond that is the airport. So this isn't even directly across from Mount Bear Island Preserve. That's much farther south. Um, and so for all of those reasons, the consultant determined that the yeah, a full EIR was not needed for the additional analysis.
That was very helpful, Lisa. Thank you very much. Um, with that, Chair, I guess I would make the suggestion, well, I my observations are that the rules that. Apply seem to have been followed. The height limit is in is present. It sounds like the billboard has um. With the adjustment for darkness uh during the nighttime from twelve to six, but then also the number of. Foot candles um following a standard um for the industry and presumably for Highway one oh one. It um to me, it seems that the objective standards that have been set out have been met um by the applicant. And I do appreciate all of the additional um. Photos and simulations of what the lighting might look like and where the billboard would fall. Um, so while it does project on, you know. And and one uh image that I wasn't too excited about, there are lots of other images that indicated that's from the residential neighborhood that it wouldn't be seen. And for um, you know, from other vantage points of the hotel, it also would not be visible nor would be visible to the hotel guests. The residents in. So um. I'm left with thinking that the um proper procedures for the objective criteria would be to. Uh recommend that we approve the mitigated neg deck and. Um, but I I will comment that it does seem. In the comment section, uh while the lease is not under discussion today, it does seem as if the city needs to develop a standard. And a protocol or a policy around which it would consider um additional billboards. And like conditions under which that may not just address revenues. But in one in what conditions would the city enter into a lease agreement in order to make the findings that only billboards can only be done. On city controlled land. Um. I I find that the willingness to enter into new leases in order to make that policy um work. Was unexpected to me. I I assumed it would only be applied to city already owned or already controlled land. Just hearing about the standard. So um I do think that that's a. Something the city council needs to explore and put in place because if objective standards are met. Um, you know, we we need to have rules by which we consider projects like this. So um so those are my comments. Thank you, Chair.
Well, I would agree with her comments. Uh I thought I earlier heard someone from staff say that. This should be the last uh application for these. Um that we wouldn't have anymore. Is that is that possible? And I don't expect a commitment. Here now, but I think it's reasonable to consider that we have we have enough of them. Uh they're a safety hazard for drivers and car accidents on a already busy road that's now got a toll road on it as well as. Uh ten lanes wide um of pavement. Uh I'm not so sure about the habitat and the birds. I don't want to confuse the birds. But if that's a problem as well as the drainage. Um, my big consideration is hard to measure. It's subjective, but it's aesthetics. I don't want to be known as the city of bad signs. That we have more signs than Belmont or even Redwood City. It's just I and I serve on this planning commission because I want to keep. Not that I'm anti-growth at all. No, far from that. But uh I I want to keep our city uh pleasing for people to live here and making more signs that are on. Uh lit up for eighteen hours a day. That would mean some people would would never see that sign off because they'd be. In bed before and after. Uh it it's just very distasteful to me. And uh I'm sorry, I don't go off often like this on projects, but this is one I feel strongly about that it's a. Safety hazard and a very negative aesthetic approach. I will say that the I think the. The uh developers of this have done good job with the other projects. Just the nature of it that bothers me and the consultants that we had that that did the uh. Act have uh did an excellent job too. I want to commend them as well as our staff, Lisa and everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Uh next, Commissioner Yakaponi.
Thank you, Chair. Um, you know, I'd like to uh just make two points while one is I want to. Echo and support the comments of both of my colleagues. Um and I distinctly remember one of the prior approvals for one of these that. Uh Commissioner of Bradley and I had um a good discussion and agreeing with each other that. We we were both failing exactly as he said, the city really doesn't need more of these. Um, and I think it was a great comment earlier. Do we actually really need the revenue? Is is it that material? Um, so I think. Point one is, um if we. Because all of the requirements have been met. Need to approve this because there isn't a basis to not approve it. Now, I don't know if that's true, but if that's the case. And I I would like to have um sentiment be clear to the city council that. The planning commission does not want to support any more of these. And we actually don't want staff to. Be put in a position to have to negotiate leases for more of these and do all of this work to get to this point. Um, and I think the second point is um. It's it's not clear whether there is basis to not approve the mitigated. Negative declaration in that the. The we went through the checklist, the areas that were questionable were addressed. The areas that were questionable were addressed. The applicant has, was asked to go through a process. With good faith, they have done so. And any of the concerns appear to have been addressed other than this general point of aesthetics and do we want this in our city? So I guess that's, it's really just saying, if I felt like there was a basis to vote no, I would. I don't actually see that there is. And if staff has a comment that says, well, on this basis, you could vote no, I'd like to know what that is.
Well, there, there may be some basis for that in terms of the impact on the environment, on the aesthetic environment. Can we see the, just to be thorough here? Can, can we see what the, the terms are that we have to agree we're meeting to approve this?
Yeah, so we do have two separate actions. One is the adequacy of the mitigated negative declarations of the environmental review. And then the second is the design review certificate. And those findings are outlined in the zoning code. So if the city attorney or jury would point you in that direction is to review the findings as listed in the staff report. And I don't know if Lisa's able to pull those up, but I can read them to you. The proposal is consistent with the general plan and the zoning code. The design of the proposal is appropriate to the city, the neighborhood and the lot in which it is proposed. The design of the proposal is compatible with its environment with respect to use, forms, materials, colors, setback, locate, height, design or similar qualities. The proposed satisfies the rules stated in chapter 18.22. Billboard is consistent with the California Outdoor Advertising Act and the Federal Highway Beautification Act. Billboard must be oriented primarily for viewing from the adjacent freeway. Billboard design and orientation takes into account visibility from surrounding residential neighborhoods. So some of those findings, right, are pretty specific. And I guess the most one that is a little more objective would be the design is compatible with its environment, is appropriate, the, the design is appropriate to the city and the neighborhood and the lot in which it's proposed. So findings two and three. Or maybe a little more for the commission to weigh in on. Thank you. I don't know if you have any other thoughts?
Would you like me to pull these up? I could stop share and kind of bring up the section of the code. But these, the, these findings that Lisa just read are found on packet pages 19, 20 and 21. So it starts at the bottom of packet page 19. But specifically, the findings two and three are found on packet page 20. And if it's helpful to the commission, I can certainly bring those up. But otherwise, they're in the packet.
So I guess I'll follow on with Commissioner Yakapony's comments that there, I think there would be room for us to consider the, especially the, the appropriate to the city and the neighborhood. As, as we get lots of billboards, the city starts to look like the Las Vegas Strip. That may not be appropriate for our city or neighborhood. So it seems like there could be, at, at some point, we could get to the place where we would have a basis to, in my opinion, we'd have a basis to, to say that we're not, the proposal doesn't meet that standard. But I'm not sure that this, in my opinion, the billboard, the new ones are not so terrible in that the lighting seems to be attenuated. The, the billboard that's near Circle Star Road seems onerous and especially bright. But the other billboards along 101 seem to be, which are newer, seem to be better. I wish somebody would perhaps measure that Circle Star billboard and see if it really meets the standards or not. But that's not what we're here to discuss tonight. But the, the other ones seem to be quite a bit less flashy and, and bright. And so my, I'm trying to weigh, I don't view it as a positive thing, but, but I, I understand that the city council would like to install this, that it's a, it is a significant revenue generator. And so I'm kind of falling on the, on this side. But it doesn't quite reach the point where, where I, I would complain, I would vote no due to the environmental i- impact on the neighborhood point. It would be nice if we could attach a little note to the city council that, that it's just as general feedback that I, I agree with other commissioners who've stated this, that, that seems like we definitely reached a limit. Oh, and I wanted to mention in the chat from the meeting, I, I think it's okay if I, if I relay the chat message from Charles Beck. And it, it says, due to the state spacing requirements and zoning requirements, there are not really any more spots to put an additional sign in the future due to the regulations. So I guess they probably have looked to see what opportunities there are. And, and, and this is the last opportunity, according to them. So should we take another pass of comments before we consider the motions? I, I, I think so. It looks like Vice, Vice Chair Clements and then Commissioner Yakapony. And Commissioner Bradley, you can just speak up since I don't see your hand.
Follow those, I'll follow my, my colleagues.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. I'm looking carefully at the, at the basis for the findings. I do think that because it is located in what is already an industrial area and it's continued, insulated to continue to be the industrial area and because it is opposite three business uses, as staff noted, Hiller Aviation, new office building and the airport, that I, I would have a hard time, it, I would have a hard time not finding that the proposal is compatible with its environment and is appropriate to the lot in which it is proposed. I find that actually the base of it and the city's logo to be attractive. And I did actually find the, all of the simulations as to the height of the billboard not being visible from many different vantage points were onerous. To be compelling, also the one on page 169 of the applicant pointed out, that billboard looks like it's off to me. And so if the technology is such that it is not the glaring horrible sign that, for instance, IKEA has in East Palo Alto, which is just overwhelming to me. If it is a different technology and it is not, it, it is not actually even visible from, you know, a few hundred feet away. And if you're not at the right angle, to me, that is much less onerous and concerning than some other ones that already exist on the highway. So looking through this, is, is it appropriate to the neighborhood? It's not visible from the residential neighborhood. And is it appropriate for the city? Well, the city weighed in on the design guidelines and the logo usage. And, you know, I don't find it unattractive as billboards go. I just don't love billboards. I also understand that they are quite lucrative. And as long as there is a lease termination and the lease itself, the city council decides is worth it. You know, it's a different topic. So I'm having a hard time making findings that would allow us to do something different than approve. Thanks.
Mr. Yakapony.
No, thank you, Chair. Maybe just a follow-up for staff and maybe Aaron, you could, you could weigh in. Compared to the previous approval that we had for a billboard such as this, is, is there any material difference in, in height, in square footage, in the V orientation? I don't think there is in the, in the column because I think that's also silver with San Carlos on it. So can, can you just share whether this is, you know, identical or largely identical? Or is there a difference from one previously approved?
This one should be exactly the same as the last one proves. I believe they're even using the same manufacturers. So it should look as most identical duplicate of the other signs that have recently been built.
Okay. And can you say, remind us when, like, was that 24 months ago? Or when was that?
I believe the last one that was built, was built about three years ago.
So I think to the applicant's point, technology has moved on. And I, I think, you know, my, my points earlier notwithstanding, I'm with Vice Chair Clements that, again, we've, there is a standard. It's an objective standard. I don't have to say I'm happy about it for the citizens of the city from an aesthetic point of view. But it meets a standard that was good and hasn't changed. And therefore I, I find it difficult to find any reason to vote what my conscience says otherwise or my design sense says otherwise. That was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bradley.
Yes, just lastly, I'd like to say, I'll, I'll, I cannot support this. Sure, I can make most of the findings that, that the staff has done and the consultant, good jobs on both their part and the developer too. But I just think enough is enough. I say that every time. And yet, I guess I've been here now about six years and gone through several of these durations on LED signboards for San Carlos. And I'm opposed to them because they're a safety hazard mainly. Not as much aesthetically, but the safety factor. They are distracting when you're driving day or night and changing every eight seconds. I mean, are we that poor? We have to prostitute ourselves to, to get projects like this? Why not? I, I think that if you went up 55 feet in the air, that most of the people staying in the residence inn of Marriott Hotel would, would be able to see this. I don't know if they said that or not, but you couldn't see it if you were on the ground floor at the swimming pool of that hotel. But if you were in the second to third, fourth, fifth floor of it, you could. I'm, I'm quite sure. And, but they're not driving. They're just looking out their window, looking at another ugly electrical sign. So I can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess I'll take my turn here and agree with Commissioner Yakapony and Vice Chair Clements that I don't see that, I think the findings, we could, findings are met with regard to the compatible with its environment in the neighborhood, given the setting of it, even though I don't think it's particularly attractive to have it. But I don't think it, it conflicts with, with that. And I trust that the highway rules for, for billboards and the airport rules and stuff are all consistent with the, with the erection of the sign. After all, this is not the first one of these along there. So there shouldn't be surprises as to, as to their impact. And so, so I would, I would say that I would would vote yes for this, even though it's aesthetically not very pleasing to have.
That, Chair, I, I can make a motion if you'd like.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I move that the planning commission adopt the accompanying, accompanying resolution for approval of the proposed mitigated negative declaration associated with the proposed installation of a new LED billboard at 611 Industrial Road, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the prepared initial study slash mitigated negative declaration and the staff report. I also move that the planning commission approve the design review associated with the proposed installation of a new LED billboard at 611 Industrial Road, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and as conditioned in the design review certificate.
Thank you.
I would second the motion if we can vote them separately. There are two motions there. Could we separate them? I'd like to support.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Yes, I agree to bifurcate, yes.
So, so we've got two motions on the table. Can I have a, a second, perhaps for the, a second to the first motion? And then we can take a roll call and then we can, and then we can second the second motion. So I, I think I heard you, Commissioner Bradley, second the first motion. Can we have a roll call on the first motion, please?
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley? Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Thank you. We have a second motion has been made. I would entertain a second for that motion.
I will second.
Would we first consider earlier Vice Chair Clements fostered the idea of doing a more detailed EIR?
So are you suggesting that, that we attach a condition, a condition or?
Yes, yes, the condition.
Point of order would the full EIR not pertain instead to the first motion rather than the second?
Yeah, I'm afraid so.
Yeah.
I didn't think it'd notice. You're very sharp.
And I'm, so the design review, I, I believe I'm satisfied that the specifications meet the, meet the design rules. So so I guess I, I don't see a place to put that in myself, Commissioner Bradley. So I guess we're left with the motion. If we have a second, then unless there's an additional comment before, before we have a second.
I believe Commissioner Yakapony seconded and then we can discuss if that motion does have a.
Okay, I did not hear that. So we have a motion and a second. So thank you. Let's have a roll call on the second motion.
Chair Ruth, I'm sorry, before a roll call, do you mind if I ask, does anyone else have anything to say about the design review before we vote?
Commissioner Yakapony or Bradley?
I'm, I support Chair's comments about the design.
I will just say, this is one of those hard decisions for me. And I, I just had to go with my values mostly on it. But I, I appreciate where everybody's coming from on this.
Okay, well, we do have a motion and a second. So is there any discussion before we have the roll call? Let's have a roll call.
I'd just like us to attach. I'd just like us to attach to our motion or, you know, to the motion that we forward to the city council that we think this should be the last sign on 101.
Steph, is there a way to, is there a way to to communicate that?
We do provide the minutes and we can capture the discussion at this point. There could be, if you want to have consensus, maybe from the commission expressing concern, I don't know if I heard from all commissioners that this is the last one, so I don't want to misstate anything. So if you just want to kind of have a straw vote or just say, do all commissioners agree that we want to forward this statement and then separately vote on the motion? Lisa Porison, if you have other ideas?
And Lisa, I just wanted to clarify, this could be a statement that would be contained in the staff report that goes to council, correct?
That's correct, yes.
That's what I was thinking would probably be the best way to reflect any sentiments from the commission to the council.
Okay, well, I would support a statement in the staff report that this be the last commercial type billboard. I mean, I understand buildings along the highway can have a sign designating the the name of the business, but and that's probably a different category. But for these big commercial buildings, I don't know what the terminology is there, but for the for this for this category, I would, I support that this be the last one. So now we've got Commissioner Bradley and me.
I would agree with that as well.
I would also agree with that. And I would suggest, you know, my earlier comments, that the city council consider a framework that continues to effectuate that. And, you know, the city council's framework could also address under what conditions leases would get re-entered into. The billboard is not going to be gone after 30 years. There just won't be a lease anymore for it. And so really, the question is, what is the council's approach to, you know, what they would like to see with billboards or lack thereof. So I I encourage that to be part of the broader discussion for lease renewals or for business terms that would affect the operations of the billboard. Thanks.
That makes sense to me as well. It's a little broader statement than than what Commissioner Bradley brought forward and I endorsed. So do we want to take?
And I concurred with as well. I think it's additive, frankly.
Yeah, it's just an additional and additional consideration to be included. I would I would support that. Any objections? Okay.
We probably should say consensus because one of our commissioners is, Ellen's not on tonight, I don't think.
Yeah, we can clarify that at the in the staff report that based on the attendees at the hearing, there was consensus, yes.
That would be perfect. Okay, that, thank you, Commissioner Bradley for for leading us in that direction to make that explicit to the city council. They've got to hear from from the people of the city somehow. So we made it happen there. So we do have the the motion and the second on the table. Are we ready for the the roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item seven, reports, correspondence, and general information, starting with letter A, report on recent city council actions.
Yes, Chair Ruth, and for the benefit of anyone watching and for the for the commission here this evening, I went ahead and added my verbal report as a as a bullet under this item, item A. And that is to say that recently, this past Monday, almost a week ago, the city council did agree to extend the urgency ordinance that was initially passed in January applicable to SB nine for those, a maximum of two lots for a subdivided parcel in single-family residential zoning areas. And this extension would last for a period of 10 months and 15 days. And the city will be embarking, or staff will be embarking on a process to work with the community to address some of the big policy questions related to SB nine. So more information on that will be coming, but just wanted to share with the commission that this, the urgency ordinance was extended on February 14.
And may I ask, do you know what forum the this is next to be discussed in? Would it be a studies session or community? How would how will input on this be gathered?
Yeah, we can do a report to the commission at our next meeting to kind of provide an outline or provide a memo to the commission on the steps that we'll be taking to have that discussion with the community. But I believe one of the very first steps is to work with the community, and we are going to be looking at whether that would be a standalone meeting or perhaps a study session where we would use the planning commission as a platform for that. But I don't have all the specifics yet. We're still looking at that, and I have to meet with the key staff that is working on that. So I don't want to misspeak and
Yeah.
right until I get that information. But that's certainly something we can bring back to the commission and share.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Are we ready to go to the B, planning commission comments or reports? Any comments or reports from the planning commission? I see Vice Chair Clements.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to report out that a part of the planning collaborative for the cities in Santa Clara County, working on the housing element. And I did want to note that at least some jurisdictions in the Bay Area, due to the implementation of AB 215, which requires an additional round of comments and public review for the draft housing element is the jurisdictions are finding it challenging to to meet the state's deadline for submission of the housing element. And I guess I wanted to ask, I don't know if staff's allowed to comment during this section, but if any jurisdictions in San Mateo County are reporting the same difficulty.
I can share that at this time, I'm not aware of anyone having that particular issue in San Mateo County, and it could very well be. But it's one of one thing that our consultants are very aware of, especially as they're going through the process, have already gone through the process in Southern California with some of their clients down in Southern California. So we'll probably be needing to kind of strategize through that process as well. But you are correct, there's the additional process where we need to get like an additional review of the housing element during the state's review process. So it makes it a little bit challenging to do that, but we are aware and we're gonna try and do our best to to get through that. So.
Great. That's good to hear. I did want to just clarify that the additional review process adds a total of 70 days or takes it away really from from the timeline upfront. And so it is it is not insignificant. And I also wanted to report that in a conversation with senior state staff, that they also strongly recommend an additional review cycle after the first submission to them and before the final submission, which adds another 60 days of review of time to the timeline, which where I worked did not anticipate that either, given how lengthy the first comment letters are being that the state is issuing for many jurisdictions. So I just wanted to report that out as well. It is not pretty out there trying to make these housing element deadlines. So that's my report.
Thank you. Any other planning commission comments or reports? Let's move on to Steve.
Washington's birthday.
Was it, is that today?
Yes, it is. Yesterday was President's Day. Today is Washington's birthday.
Okay, used to be a zone holiday. It's only got consolidated.
Enough to remember that we got two two holidays a year due to Lincoln and
That's right. That's right. Thank you for that report, informal report. Any other comments or reports before we move on? Let's see if there's any correspondence.
I guess through the chair, the comments, the correspondence that staff received today regarding the agenda item 6A, 611 Industrial has been forwarded to the commission and will be part of the record.
Thank you. That's right. I did see those. Part D, planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects.
Yes, so I have a couple of things that I would like to share with the commission, and I'll follow up in an email so that the commission doesn't have to write all this down. But for our next regular scheduled meeting, which is on March 7, we will have an item before the commission, and it has to do with a proposed amendment to a previously approved sign program for the Transit Village project. So this is gonna, this, the amendments are concerning the two commercial buildings that frame the Historic Depot at the Caltrain site around that station area. So there's some modifications being made to that sign program that are being requested. And so because we have a previously approved sign program for that area, that would need to come forward for the commission to review and consider. So that'll be on the March 7 agenda. And so far, that's the only item we have. It looks like that'll be a light agenda. But then on March 21, our second meeting in the month of March, we have a pretty full agenda. So there's a lot of things happening on March 21. We will have the housing element annual progress report for the year 2021. So this is where we can share, you know, how many building permits were issued for how net new housing units in the city and how close we are at meeting arena from the fifth cycle, which is our 596 unit cycle that would go from the year 2015 to 2023. So we will be reporting on that. We also have a use permit request for five, excuse me, 380 Industrial Road for a company called Auto Vino. And so this was an interesting business proposal where I guess we'll save the description for the for the meeting, but that will be at 380 Industrial. And then lastly, but not least, is the tree protection ordinance. That's on the queue to come to the commission on March 21. So I will follow up in an email. So you have all of these written down, but I just wanted to give you a heads up of what's coming up on the agenda for next month. And that's all I have for this evening.
Well, thank you very much. And we can adjourn our meeting.
Thank you all. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.